Welcome. Today is January 2nd, 2018. Can I roll call?
Basil?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Kraus?
Here.
Missouri?
Here.
Weiling?
Here.
Do we have the minutes of January 8th? Are there any changes or corrections? At this time, is there a motion?
So long.
A motion made, is there a second?
There's a second.
There's a second, any questions to the motion? Roll call.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer? Yes. Kraus?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Capores?
Yes.
Weiling?
Yes.
Press your board.
The only thing I have is tax income received since the last time I reported it. We had reporting on the same schedule last month because of the holidays, so there's a couple of double payments in there. That is $193,641.21. That's it.
Anyone from the audience which would press for it? If not, Lieutenant Anderson, we have some more. Is he good boy today?
Yeah, we got two parts. First part, I'll let... First part's community policing, I'll let Director Tatum brief you about that.
Dennis, do you want to go ahead and stand behind the clerk over here?
Absolutely.
So everyone can see you.
Fire Department, step forward please.
This year, we did something that we've never done before with the village. With the village involved, the fire department, fire protection district, fire association, trustees, Jonathan's Union. We took a program that's nationwide, a lot of it is called Shop with a Cop. We received some names from the village of children that possibly weren't able to get a Christmas gift, or for some reason, there was a financial hardship. So, this year through the donations, we were able to take, well, we had 28 that signed up for the program. We took them to Target in St. John, provided lunch from Tony's for the chaperones, the mayor was involved, Bob Barber, and like I said, the fire department and police department partnered together for this, and it was very successful. So I think it's a program that we are going to continue, again, from a donation from Mr. Capores's Union. And Jonathan, we do have a letter for you.
No, 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 no.
Not here, by the way, we forget. But I'd like to call the Beecher Fire Protection Representatives up. Anybody? Arch? As a certificate of recognition awarded to the Beecher Fire Department District for your generous support during the... Target calls it the Helpers and Heroes Program on December 16, 2017, given this 22-day of February 2018. And thank you again for your partnership, your people that you supplied during that time, your generous contribution. At this time, I'd like to call the Beecher Fire... Volunteer Fire Department Association Representative. Again, a certificate of recognition to that organization for your generous support during the Heroes and Helpers Program. Again, we received, and I believe the trustees may have in their packet, we received a letter back from one of the recipients this year, and it was heartfelt that we were able to do this for the children of our community. Again, on behalf of everyone, thank you for your contribution. Thank you.
Okay, camera working. Go up there.
The next act we have is some recognition for a couple officers, and then we got a promotion for two officers. Probably one of the better parts of the job here is getting to recognize the officers for what they do. They don't get a lot of recognition, so... My first two are Officer Jeff Young and Officer Jamie Hawkins. They're getting service, years of service awards tonight. Jeff, 25 years of service, that's 25, 4th of July as he's given up to be with us, and Jamie is getting 10-year service pen, so luckily, we got this recorded because probably you don't afford me and you're going to go too. So, we've got a... Each has a certificate, and to Officer Jeff Young, for 25 years of dedicated and faithful service to the citizens of Beecher and Beecher Police Department. Thank you. And to Officer Jamie Hawkins, for 10 years of dedicated and faithful service to the citizens of Beecher and the Beecher Police Department. So that's the first recognition tonight, and these two will stay here. Officer Hawkins is next on the docket again, and... Officers may or may not be... Excuse me, the gallery, most of them are probably familiar because they're here for different things, but she was injured in line of duty, and we have an awards process began in 1999, or policy began in 1999, where the chief that came in at that point in time recognized officers for actions in the line of duty, and this is one of these times. And I'm going to read from the citation, she is going to be awarded the Purple Heart tonight for his injuries sustained in the line of duty. "On Saturday, February 22, 2014, Officer Hawkins was dispatched to report of a subject breaking into vehicles in Hunter Chase subdivision. Officer Hawkins located the suspect and initiated a traffic stop on the vehicle while taking the suspect into custody. Struggle took place during which Officer Hawkins was slammed repeatedly into the suspect's vehicle. Officers were finally able to gain control of the subject, and after the use of less than lethal tools, but not before, Officer Hawkins suffered injuries which required surgery and extensive physical rehabilitation over a three-year period. Officer Hawkins' determination to finish the fight, control the offender, and protect the public while injured is indicative of the highest goals of the Beecher Police Department and reflects our core values and our daily interaction with the public. Officer Hawkins showed sincere dedication to the public welfare, and her unselfish act resulted in a detachable and identifiable public good. Her actions at day reflected favorably upon Officer Hawkins and the entire Beecher Police Department. For injuries sustained in the line of duty on Saturday, February 22, 2014, while arresting a burglar to motor vehicle suspect, you're hereby awarded the Purple Heart." So, 25 years, 10 years, pretty impressive, the Purple Heart. Couple witness statements, she stated the fight, she did not give up. Although she was injured, she did not release that subject the whole time until the subject was under control and custody, so very impressive, congratulations. Next item we have is two officers are being promoted tonight. We have... Officer Everett Deport, Officer Roger Simple, step forward. You have a... You both, those are both read to you. We just finished a testing process. Turn around, Joe.
No, 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 good behind the table, go by the flag.
We had a family come pin him though.
Oh, okay.
We just finished a testing process, started, I believe, September, and sometime September, and just finished up December, okay? Four officers took part in the testing process, put more supervisors on shifts, on night shifts, and after a written test, oral interview, and evaluation of performance, these two gentlemen were the two top candidates. They are changing from patrol to corporal, first-line supervisor, on midnight shifts, and they're out there providing service to the citizens. So, we wanted to bring them in tonight, recognize them for this accomplishment, wanted to continue the tradition of having a family member come forward and pin them, and also, they will be read a new oath of office for the position of corporal, so...
Want the oath first?
Yeah, we should do the oath first.
And you'd like them run individually? Is that correct?
Your choice.
We can do it individually, just like... All right, behind you, write your office. Put your right hand in the heat after me. I, Roger Simple.
I, Roger Simple.
Having been appointed to the position of corporal...
I've been appointed to the position of corporal.
In the Village of Beecher...
In the Village of Beecher.
In the County of Will...
In the County of Will.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
I'm sorry, do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of corporal to the best of my ability.
And the position of corporal to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Want to do the pinning of the next oath?
Do you want to do the pinning of the next oath? I'll do the pinning.
I'm just... Stand here. And I'll need signatures when we're all gone, you'll be able to do that after this meeting. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Aaron Decourt.
I, Aaron Decourt.
Having been appointed to the position of corporal...
Having been appointed to the position of corporal.
In the Village of Beecher...
In the Village of Beecher.
In the County of Will...
In the County of Will.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of corporal to the best of my ability.
Of the position of corporal to the best of my ability.
Reddick?
Good question. He deserved to hear it, ouch.
Would Roger and Aaron want to introduce the pinners?
Sure. We're going to have some front.
We got you here, that's good.
This is my nephew Riley Simple, and he's a Special Olympics winner for gold medalists for shot put in 2017.
This is my dad, Gene Decourt.
Okay, with that, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Reminder to review a five-year financial plan. We expect to vote on the resolution adopting this plan at the February 26 meeting. The draft of the strategic plan resolution released is enclosed for your review. At the February 12 meeting, we will plan to go through it in detail to make any changes to it that the board wants, and then vote on the plan at the February 26 meeting. One other thing, one thing to note is the mission statement, which did not, we did not discuss as a board, which is included in there. It is the same one we had from 2009 and 2013. The mission statement is important since it is a requirement of many grant applications, and the comprehensive plan, use plan preamble to have a mission statement. So the staff, the staff is asking for opinion on the mission statement as well. Do you have any changes or...
We can deal with that in February.
We can deal with that in February.
Is there any language that needs being there, since we're looking at creating the tip, this applies to grants and other things like that?
It shouldn't, but I think that's a standard mission statement that most communities have.
Yeah, look pretty good. The budget process now begins. Department heads have to have their budgets in to the administrator by February 15. Committee can meet if they want between February 15 and March 1st to review the numbers. Finance committee is scheduled to meet at 7:00 a.m. on Saturday, March 10th, to review the entire budget and to bring the budget into balance. The village board will then review the budget at that time. At that, at the end of the March 26 meeting, the village board will take an hour to go over it. We will recess for five minutes, then do the board workshop. The hearing for the budget is scheduled April 23rd, at which time the budget will then be voted on, and it will go into effect May 1st. Consider a motion authorizing a public hearing on the proposed budget for Monday, April 23rd at 7:00 a.m. So, I'd like to present a motion authorizing a public hearing on the proposed budget for Monday, April 23rd at 7:00 p.m.
So motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Is there a question in the motion? Roll call.
Weiling?
Yes.
Capores?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Meyer? Yes. Basil?
Yes. That ends my report.
I got a couple questions.
Sure.
So, the 26 were reviewing the five-year financial and voting on it same night?
If you're ready to vote on it, if not, you can take it.
Okay. And then, the same thing for the budget, it just seems short to me. In the past, in years past, I mean, we've started at 6 o'clock, had dinner, and been lucky to get out of here on time, and we're going to try to cram it all into after a meeting, and not after one of our short meetings where we pay the bills, which is the second Monday of the month, we're going to try to do that on the fourth Monday of the month, we got full committee reports.
I would have no problem if you wanted to have a special board meeting to review the budget. That would not be a problem.
We have in the past, I mean, it's...
Is that what, normally?
I thought we switched it, we changed it to the shorter meeting.
Yeah, I don't remember which meeting in the month we did it, but I believe we did start early.
We did start early, but still it was all in one night.
It was all in one night, I bet.
But it might have been on like the finance night where it's the shorter meeting.
That can't happen.
No.
It's got to be...
It's on the second one?
Yeah, it's got to be near the end of March, because when you guys read on March 10th, then we have to produce another draft of the budget for the board to review. And if you wait till the first meeting in April, that leaves two weeks between that board meeting and the hearing. So we want 30 days.
Last year, we started the whole process earlier, in February, we had not financed last year.
The finance committee typically meets the first Saturday of March, it's been historic. This year, we are running behind, yes, about a week. If you want to accelerate it, we can.
I mean, it's, it's a schedule, I mean, I don't know what's going to be...
It's going to be late night.
I can't tell you, I don't know, I've got nothing in front of me, I'm just saying, it should only take an hour, in years past, it's taken a lot longer than an hour, so I don't know what to say other than that, just putting it out there.
If you want to, just do a special meeting, it's fine with me.
It's, it's up to the...
Pick a night and go.
This is up to the finance committee, I've talked to the finance chair and whatever he thinks, but, I mean, I'm just putting that out there, whatever you guys...
I think last year went pretty fast, but I don't, who knows what particulars we're going to have this year, who knows, but, till we get into it. Last year went pretty fast, if I remember right, it was an hour, hour and a half.
Any other question? Building and property's perks of recreation committee trustee.
Fireman's Park totlot update, we have a large board here with some design plans. This is, this was our original plan, and what we did then is we scaled it down to a smaller, just for the totlot, and basically have proposals on that, so that's where it's at right now. Trustee Kraus and myself are going to get together and we're going to talk to other taxing bodies and people about grants and everything else, so that's the update on the Fireman's Park totlot update. The ice rink update, I know today wasn't a good day for ice skating, but I got a feeling that it's going to get cooler as we go on. Any update?
Well, actually, it's been shut off down since last Thursday because of the weather. There's probably about two and a half, three inches of water on it right now, so I don't see us getting in there, any big hurry, because we're not going to rip into the fields with any equipment, so we'll play it by ear for the next two weeks.
Okay. One thing is, as far as turning on and off the lights, who does that?
We turn them on when we leave, and the police department is supposed to be turning them off at nighttime.
Because there's been a couple of times during the day when I find them on... On Saturdays and Sundays, the public works, duty man will turn them on at the end of his duty in the morning. It's cheaper to run those lights for six hours than to call out someone on overtime to turn the lights on. Unless an arrangement can be made with the police department to turn them on, it does on Saturdays and Sundays. But that's why you see them on weekends, right bud, around 10 o'clock they get turned on?
Right, and, yeah, and then you can figure that really, it gets dark around 4 o'clock anyway, and you're pretty darn close to it, so, yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to bring that up, I saw them on a couple times. My next item is the inventory of the village-owned parcels. There's 35 different parcels, we have them divided into the different parcels themselves. There's been a search done as far as, in here, there's a tax search, and we just wanted to make sure that it was a village-owned property and that we were tax-exempt. So we're going to monitor this, this is the first time we've done this and did our inventory, but there are 36, or 35 different parcels throughout the village that the village owns, so we're going to...
Total 250 acres.
250 acres?
Which is amazing, 500.
Right. So that's where we're at right now.
Is that some ponds and things?
Ponds, yeah.
Ponds, parks...
Bike paths.
I don't know if easements are included on it.
Just village, actually, parcels of village has title.
Right. Village receives a $10,000 grant from the CSX Railroad, and a $5,000 grant from IPRF to install a generator at the police station. The village has the generator and has poured the concrete pad, but we have a lack of funds, which was 15,000 needed to install the transfer switch and the wiring for the system. This funding that we just received will make the project happen this spring. We are currently getting quotes for the work and hope to have it done as soon as possible. That ends my report.
You can play in building and building personnel.
Building department monthly report is enclosed for your review. Building department annual report is also enclosed. There was 2 million in new construction generating 34,500 MBS. 138 permits were issued, including 6 new homes. It was a quiet year. PZC meeting scheduled for Thursday, January 25th. Discussion of an 18-acre solar farm a mile east of the village limits on Indiana Avenue is planned with the petitioner, since a letter of denial objection is required for county consideration. The PZC will also continue its review of the trailer and RV ordinance. CMF LTA grant update, we received a draft RFP for 130,000 grant project which is enclosed for your review and will now be led to the consultants. We do not expect to begin actual planning until this summer at this point due to the duration of the selection process. That ends my report.
Public works committee trustee.
Water department along with sewer department monthly reports are enclosed for review. Water bill and register for the months of November and December is enclosed for your review also. Pumped bill ratio is close to 72%, which is up from 68% for the same time period last year. In addition, a long time, I believe, which I'm sure it was, a long time water leak surfaced on Lyman Drive, we had to bring in a contractor, there's a ton of stuff in that usement there with all the utilities. Anyway, they chased it for about 40 feet, it's clamped, it stopped, and some people had some pumps that ran pretty often over the last 10 years, are no longer running, so it's a positive. Chestnut street light update, lights are installed, I spoke to Buddy, he's meeting with ComEd tomorrow, hook up the power and...
He will do the onsite observation, then he will issue the order, so that's all we're going to be waiting for, as fast as that goes through. Get you ready to roll.
Wastewater treatment plant project update, we're back on schedule for the project, we're just awaiting the formal loan offer from the IPA. We hope to provide a contractor with a notice to proceed on around March 15th, which is our original 120-day holding time. Valve turning program for 2017 was completed. Anything you want to add to that Buddy?
No, every...
Did we report on this last night?
Yeah.
Did we?
I haven't physically gotten it, I'm waiting for the physical report, but it's the, the area that was done was from the south end of the town to Penfield to the new water main, all the new valves, water main, everything was GPSed and put in, it will be mapped and put into our system, and you'll be able to go online, a few people, and see anything you need to.
Pasadena and Dixie intersection improvements, we've been advised by IDOT that they open to make improvements to this intersection somewhere in the summer or fall of 2018. The section does not meet ADA standards, and ramps, ramps have to be installed and curb corners widened. Small projects should be no traffic interruption. This one, the village gets an engineer estimate for the proposed water main replacement project on Dunbar from Hodges to Indiana. Committee meeting, we have met, it's kind of a, possibly our next project. We're unhappy with, there's not much to say about this, it's there, I'm meeting with Ray, so we'll see what comes of this, because even the new estimate, I'm not happy with, so I asked Bob to set something up with me and Ray, and I will be meeting with the Baxter and woman, and we'll be taking it from there, so...
Think you have any indication why it's okay?
There's, there's a...
Police department, EMA and coenforcement monthly reports are enclosed for your review. Also the animal control annual report is enclosed. 2017 program across the village, $1,810, which is less than the $9,630 we collected in the animal business. We briefly met about it, we're just gonna keep the program going, we built all four villages and it's paid for in fees, so we're good there. That's all, yeah, that's our next one.
Public works committee, trustee.
Water department along with sewer department monthly reports are enclosed for review. Water bill and register for the months of November and December is enclosed for your review also. Pumped bill ratio is close to 72%, which is up from 68% for the same time period last year. In addition, a long time, we believe, which I'm sure it was, a long time water leak surfaced on Lyman Drive, we had to bring in a contractor, there's a ton of stuff in that basement there with all the utilities. Anyway, they chased it for about 40 feet, it's clamped, it stopped, and some people had some pumps that ran pretty often over the last 10 years are no longer running, so it's a positive. Chestnut street light update, lights are installed, I spoke to Buddy, he's meeting with ComEd tomorrow, hook up the power and.
He will do the onsite observation, then he will issue the order, so that's all we're gonna be waiting for as fast as that goes through. And be ready to roll.
Waste water treatment plant project update, we're back on schedule for the project, we're just awaiting the formal loan offer from the IUPA. We hope to provide a contractor with a notice proceeding on around March 15th, which is our original 120-day holding time. Valve turning program for 2017 was completed. Anything you wanna add to that Buddy?
No, um, every.
Did we report on this?
Yeah.
Did we?
I haven't physically gotten, I'm waiting for the physical report, but it's the, the area that was done was from the south end of the town to Penfield to the new water main, all the new valves, water main, everything was GPSed and put, it will be mapped and put into our system and you'll be able to go online, a few people, and see anything you need to.
Pasadena and Dixie intersection improvements, we've been advised by IDOT that they open make improvements to this intersection somewhere in the summer or fall of 2018. The section does not meet ADA standards and ramps, ramps have to be installed and curb corners widen. Small projects should be no traffic interruption. This one, the village gets an engineer estimate for the proposed water main replacement project on Dunbar from Hodges, Indiana. Committee meeting, we had met, it's kind of a possibly our next project. We're unhappy with, there's not much to say about this, it's there, I'm meeting with Ray, so we'll see what comes of this, because even the new lesson I'm not happy with, so I've asked Bob to set something up with me and Ray and I will be meeting with Baxter and women and we'll be taking it from there, so.
Think of any indication why it's okay?
There's, there's a ton to it, it's a long stretch, but it's still, there's, there's some issues that I have with a few other things in it too, so I don't wanna dive too much into it yet, because we're still at the very, very early stages, but hopefully we'll have some sort of a design proposal for you next month, so I think that concludes my report.
Land development, trustee.
Tiff district update, village president has talked informally with all the taxing bodies regarding the village board's proposal. The village president also met with one of the largest property owners in the proposed district outside the village to discuss annexation before any Tiff designation on the property and he was warmly received. The village also received the enclosed proposal from TSCA for 18,000 to 20,000 to get the Tiff district approved by the state and up and running with the Tiff board. This will be in the proposed budget for the next fiscal year. A Tiff educational presentation is scheduled with the intergovernmental group meeting on January 29th at the Township Center. All trustees are encouraged to attend the meeting, we're well on our way to implementation.
Who's giving the education meeting? Is it by ESSER put on by the TSCA or?
TSCA. TSCA. Facebook page update, we've been up and running for more than 30 days and it's becoming reasonably popular. I think we have 602 likes on the page as of when I just checked it. The most popular post so far was of course the information about Dunkin' Donuts between the shares and everybody who looked at it, it was looked at by over 12,200 people.
Viral.
Last I looked, it could be more now. Some serious copy. Yes, and that is my report.
Just mention about the intergovernmental meeting, which I encourage everybody to attend with their questions, that this ESSER is going to be there. And again, just keeping an eye on the, there is a Tiff, what do they call it?
Tiff task force?
Tiff task force out there and just curious to see what they're gonna do with it, we just have to keep an eye on it.
Of course, we know about what's going on in University Park with their Tiff task force.
You can't be abused, because we don't intend to be, that's a good thing about it, but I'm worried about this Tiff task force, if they're gonna do anything that would change anything in the future.
Like they're gonna shut it down?
No, we don't, it's very vague right now, all I know is there's a Tiff task force, I believe it's being prompted by the abuse of the Tiffs, so that should not affect us in any way or form.
It's being sponsored by the state or?
I think it is by the state.
It was a joint resolution. So I stated Illinois, it was a joint resolution that they create this task force to investigate ways to improve by regulation how Tiffs are used because they have been abused and it's basically against the city of Chicago because the entire downtown business district of the city is in Tiff.
Okay, just throwing it out there, saying that we just have to keep an eye on it and like Bob said, just, I mean, now that it was prompted by the city of Chicago, but then most recently we have a University Park which seems to be in hot water over Tiff, but we've always known they can't be abused and we have no intention of doing it.
I mean, do we have to get past this task force or is this just something?
No, no, just something to be aware of, just everybody, if you see something out there, start an email or newspaper or whatever it is, just try to keep abreast of it and we'll try to keep you abreast of it.
It is possible, I guess, that the city agency could be directed to not approve any additional Tiffs in the state until the task force makes its findings, but that's not the indication that we've received so far.
I'm not worried about it.
Not worried about it, guys?
Yeah, not worried about it. That's all.
So that's not happening yet?
No.
No.
Just something to be out there.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. We'll go into old business?
No.
Any new business? Okay, with that, when it becomes appropriate, we'll have an executive session. I'll take a recess and tell them. First meeting today.
The adjourn, adjourn the exec, are you calling for an executive session or are you saying for the purpose of?
Personally, no.
No.
We'll do it when we're more, when we, we are in open session right now.
Hold recess.
We can ban, we can ask for motion to go into executive session.